Good evening and welcome to the Trumbull Board of Education regular meeting of Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Correspondence, Mrs. Norso.
Yes, the Board of Education received five emails since our last meeting. Liz Perizan feels that the signs at Trumbull High School are political and tied to Black Lives Matter and the radical left, and she feels they should be removed. Peter and Laura Yavuzasovich doesn't understand why we gave up the cohort model and brought all children in, since numbers are climbing and the school system continues to have cases of the virus. Rasha Tarek believes that bringing children back doubles their chances to be exposed. Her child, she complains, has been in quarantine twice and wants to know, why don't we do what Westport and Fairfield has done, because they've decided to rethink being in and like strafe it that plan to close immediately. Victoria Kwan and Cavita Mahiga wanted to thank the Board of Education for the temporary remote learning program, and they said that they also, other families would like to tell us that they are very grateful for that program. Those are all our emails this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Norso. All right, public comment, we have no public comment this evening. I'm going on to the superintendent report.
All right, so the superintendent update, I'm not going to talk about reopening during the superintendent update, but we get to the section of the agenda, I will talk all about the opening. I do want to give a quick update about Mary Ellen Way. On Friday, November 6th, last Friday, I was joined by Board Member Marie Petiti and Board Chair Lucinda Tempanelli, and we went to Jane Ryan, and there was just a wonderful celebration where everyone got together to really highlight that the new street sign that was placed there, Mary Ellen Way, and those who knew Mary Ellen Bolden as a principal in our district. I unfortunately was someone who didn't ever get a chance to meet her, but I've heard so many stories about what a wonderful person she was, what, just a great spirit she was, and I really feel like I missed out on meeting a wonderful person. I did meet a bunch of really excellent people along the way, though. Ben Lipinski had reached out when I first got on board, and he and the JR Fathers Club really helped shepherd this through the town council and getting Mary Ellen Way approved by the town council. Lots of staff, students, parents, Mary Ellen's family joined the celebration. And I just encourage people to drive by over at Jane Ryan and take a look at the sign. And what I think is really profound is just the name. They called it Mary Ellen Way, and she sounds like she was such a role model for people that it's a great name for a sign, that to do it the Mary Ellen Way would be a really positive way of doing things. So I think it's a wonderful testament to the person and the people that she's impacted. And that's the extent of my update.
Oh, okay. Okay, next is the board chair report. And I guess Marie Petiti and I enjoyed going to the dedication ceremony of Mary Ellen Way. It was nice to see the number of people that attended, plus the students. So it was held on Friday, November 6th, and we made it before it got too cold and too dark, so it was a very good event. Okay, next, I would like to take a moment to say a few words about Tony Pjar, the Dean of Students at Trumbull High School for the past 16 years. His last day was October 30th. I worked with Tony for several years at Trumbull High School. He made the Dean of Students position a vital and essential part of the school community. His work has touched many lives for the better. His expertise in communicating is an admirable quality, as he was able to achieve resolutions to issues via dialogue peppered with genuine respect and openness. He is a trustworthy and honorable person, and I want to thank him on behalf of the Board for all he has done for our students and staff at Trumbull High School. Good luck, good health, and much happiness, Tony, in your retirement. That's speed. Okay, next.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move the agenda item, letter C, from Attorney Dugus, to agenda item, letter A, right before we approve the minutes.
I'll second that, Lucinda.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Mrs. Norso seconds. All in favor? Mrs. Petiti?
Aye.
Aye, aye, Tim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Scott? I didn't hear Scott.
You're muted.
Yes, oh, okay.
Yes, sorry about that, I was muted.
Andy?
In favor?
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, good, and that passes. Okay, Attorney Dugus, come to the podium, please.
Thank you. This is the last of the contracts that have been expired June 30th of 2020. This is the custodian and maintenance bargaining unit contract. I mentioned this briefly, I believe, in a nonmeeting when we were talking about, I think it was the food service workers, but the contract, what we worked out is a one-year extension of the current contract with a 2% increase and a 0.5% increase in health insurance costs, which is, of course, similar to the other agreements that I brought back to you. One-year extension is basically the result of the fact that because of COVID and the fact that the custodian and maintenance staff was very busy during the summer around COVID and COVID-19 and so forth, we never frankly had an opportunity to engage in any negotiations, frankly, other than some informal conversations in the month of August with the usual pressure from the state to either have an agreement or enter into a waiver or go to arbitration. The union inquired as to whether we'd be interested in a, just a one-year extension. Because we were sort of at a funny point in between Mr. Ison's departure, Dr. Semel's arrival, I thought it was a good idea, not only on the backs of a 2% increase and an increase of a half percent in cost here, but especially because I thought it was important that he and Mr. Habigson get an opportunity to get their hands around what's going on with the custodial and maintenance and have a better opportunity to negotiate a contract of a longer duration. So it's along the lines of the other agreements. It's a one-year extension and consistent with the others. I engaged in conversations with Dr. Semel, he was supportive of it, and I would recommend it for your approval.
Okay, let's make a motion to accept this. Can I have a motion?
It's a Scott, I'll make a motion to accept the Trumbull Custodial Maintenance Employee Bargaining Unit Agreement as presented.
Tim Gallo second?
I'll second it, Lucinda, Jackie.
No, Tim already seconded Jackie. Okay, I want to know if there's any questions for Attorney Dugus?
Nope, not for me.
Everybody okay? All right, I'll take the vote. Mrs. Petiti?
Aye, yes, in favor.
Lucinda Tempanelli in favor? Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Scott Carey?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Palo?
In favor.
Okay. Or I guess we're good, thank you. Unanimous, thank you, Attorney Dugus.
Madam Chair, if we could circle back to--
Yeah, we are. We have a great name.
Referee Board?
Yes, we have the Student Board of Ed, we're, I don't know if Jack Gallo is on or Gabby.
Jack is on, and we're bringing him in right now.
Thank you.
And I'll bring in Gabby as well.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah. Hello?
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. All right, so, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to see you all today, and thank you for another great meeting. I would like to say that at Trumbull High School, as we near the end of the first quarter, students are optimistic and hopeful for what the rest of the year will bring. While we have all certainly had our struggles throughout this experience, both students and faculty, I am proud of the Trumbull Public Schools community for coming together and making this possible. To me, it seems that students are beginning to adapt to the new environment that they have been placed in, and many of the problems that we initially faced are now far behind us. I feel now that as a community, that rather than feeling our way around the situation, we can begin to look towards the future and what the rest of the year can bring. There's one issue that has been circulating throughout the community, mostly among students and their parents, that I would like to address. It is possible some of you have seen the petition that has been posted online, however, I find it suitable to bring this issue into light for this meeting. As far as I'm aware, Trumbull High School's policy for half-year classes is that an A-grade and zero unexcused absences result in a student having the opportunity to be exempt from midterms. Given the current state of the school, most especially regarding virtual learning, there are many things that can lead to an unexcused absence that are unfortunately completely out of control of the student, such as Wi-Fi issues, technology issues, et cetera. While we all agree that attendance is important, a hard-working student with high achievements should not be penalized for things out of their control. I feel this problem needs to be addressed, granted, students will be required to take midterms this year. Apart from this, there's word spreading that Trumbull High will be trying to implement certain things this year, for example, Spirit Week. I would like to comment that students are very excited for these types of things, and I think it is pivotal to the success of students that we do our best as a community to maintain some type of normalcy in these uncertain times. Thank you for listening, I'm excited for the rest of the year.
Jack, I just have one suggestion for you. You need to take this up with the principal. Make sure that you have spoken to him about your concern about the grade and the midterm, okay? And if you want to go first, you can go to your house principal first and then to the principal, but you should see one of the administrators at the high school, okay? Thank you. Okay, are we complete? Is Gabby on with you, or is it just you, Jack?
Hi, I'm here as well.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Gabby Beyondi, and I'm a senior at Trumbull High School. We discuss the faith of many clubs at Trumbull High School and are happy to say that clubs have or have not started. While they may look different this year, we encourage every student to visit the virtual club page and be involved. I also wanted to note the outstanding achievements from Trumbull High School's sports teams. The girls' field hockey team went undefeated with a 12-0 record and were named the regular season champions and the FCAC Division Champions. The girls' volleyball team also had a very successful season with an 11-1 record and were named the regular season champions as well as the FCAC Division Champions. Lastly, the boys' and girls' cross-country team were named East Division Champions, and the boys had an undefeated season. Just wanted to give my congratulations to all of our amazing teams, and although this, I'm sure the students wish they could cheer you on from the stands, we are there with you in spirit. Jack had also mentioned about Trumbull High School Spirit Week this year, and the Student Council is happy to announce it. It'll be running from November 16th to November 20th. Students, whether online or in person, are encouraged to participate, and the days are as follows. Monday, Vacation Day; Tuesday, Decades Day; Wednesday, Pyjama Day; Thursday, Color Wars; and lastly, Friday, Black and Gold Day. Currently, other events are being planned by the Student Council, so please keep a lookout for that. As the marking period comes to an end, we will not forget the hard work teachers have put forth and continue to put forth every day. And while the indecision of when students will return to school full-time remains, students are optimistic for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next action item, I need a motion with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Lucinda, I'll make it if you want.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of 10:27, 2020.
I need a second.
I second the motion.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a double second. It's Tim and Mike. Okay, anyone have any changes they would like to make to the minutes? Everything okay? Okay, let me take the vote. Marie Petiti? Lucinda Tempanelli in favor?
I'm in favor.
Tim Gallo in favor? Mike Ward in favor? Scott?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie?
In favor.
Okay, Andy Palo?
In favor.
Thank you. We'll accept those. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is personnel, Dr. Semel.
All right, we have a couple of important personnel pieces. First, we have a retirement, which is Lauren, and I hope I don't mess up her name, but Lauren Peckleyan, science teacher at Madison Middle School since August 1999, retiring effective June 30th, 2021. And also, we have a request for leave of absence. Jennifer Angelovic, a grade four teacher at Middlebrook Elementary School, who's been there since November 2006, is requesting that we approve a personal leave of absence without pay, effective November 24th through June 30th, 2021. And this request does comply with the Trumbull Board of Education Leave of Absence Policy 4150, and our recommendation is that you accept and approve both of these.
So I would make that motion to approve the retirement of Lauren Peckleyan and the request for a leave of absence from Jennifer Angelovic. Lauren was a science teacher at Madison Middle School since August 1999, and Jennifer was a fourth grade teacher at Middlebrook Elementary School since November 2006.
I need a second.
I'll second it, Lucinda.
Jackie Norso second. Okay, any questions or anyone want to comment? We okay? All right, I will take the vote. Mrs. Petiti? In favor? Lucinda Tempanelli in favor? Tim?
I'm in favor.
Mike?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie?
In favor.
Okay, Scott?
Yes, in favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Thank you. That's in favor, that passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, any questions?
Yep.
Okay, our next is the reopening, Dr. Semel.
All right, so reopening update's a little bit longer as it's been. And first, I do have to just give a real shout-out to all of the staff that are working in our district, from our teach-- I don't want to just start naming groups because I could leave one out, but all of our staff are just doing amazing work. When you think about the importance of our children having the opportunity to learn, the folks in our buildings every day are making it happen. It's such a critical part of what's happening in our world right now, and the staff at Trumbull are just doing great work. And I think people should just be incredibly proud of all that they're doing, given everything else that's swirling around the world at this time. So I want to give them all a true shout-out. As we continue to looking, to look at our schools, given the current data, clearly, the numbers in Fairfield County and our state continue to rise. For the weeks of October 18th through the October 31st, which is where the Department of Public Health is asking us to be looking at, the leading and the secondary indicators for Fairfield County are still, they're actually listed as high now. So that must be paid attention to in terms of what they're putting on the website. However, for the same two weeks, Trumbull is listed as having 14.2 cases per 100,000. This is up from six per 100,000 two weeks ago, and there's, at this point now, a positivity rate of 3.5% in Trumbull specifically. Currently, we have 14 out of our 592 certified staff that are under quarantine, and that's an important part because our teaching staff in particular, if we have too many of them who are in quarantine, it's going to become very difficult to remain open, and I'll come back to that point. But that's 2.3% of all of our certified staff, so, and that's a rolling list of numbers. We get quarantined typically for 14 days, and people come off the list, go on the list, and the goal is to try to keep as many of our certified staff able to be in the building. We're also having about average of one case per day, so that's why people get an email from me just about every day about a case in our buildings. One thing that's really important to note is that I do expect our colleagues from around the state to be making different decisions based on their very specific local information that's current. So it would be, I think, a mistake to look in other towns and say, well, they just did that, we need to do that, for whichever way, whether they're opening up further or closing down further. I think what we need to make sure we keep doing is paying attention to our local data. And the two most important things that we're going to continue to look at is the number of cases in each of our buildings and our ability to contact trace and make sure that we're able to pull out the students who would be in close contact and make sure we can continue to work on it. That's one. If we can keep up with the contact tracing, that's an important element. The other piece is what I mentioned two before. We need to make sure we're paying attention to how much staff we have in our building. Currently, we have 14 quarantined. We can work with that. It's not easy. We obviously have a number of subs, not just for certified teachers, but for paris and those other positions. But as long as those two pieces are manageable, we're going to continue to stay in the course. Currently, there's no attempt to try to open up six through eight or nine through 12 any further. We're not going to try to bring kids back at those grade levels at this time, given where we are. Another thing that we're going to be changing is that, it's not really a major change, but it happened, in fact, last night. We sometimes become aware of a case late in the evening, and when that happens, there's not enough time to actually do the contact tracing with fidelity. So last night, we had to make the decision that we would close Trumbull High School today because we just didn't have enough time to do the contact tracing, which means we wouldn't have been able to identify the kids or staff that couldn't be there, and that, we don't want to get into that situation. So you may see us close a school for a day sometimes in order to make that contact tracing. One thing that I will do next time, because of the lateness of the phone call, there was a handful of people who weren't aware, so I will also follow up with a phone call. So they'll get an email, they'll get a text, and they'll get a phone call, so that we're doing our best to communicate with people as we move forward with that. And again, we may need to close our A-school or our district if we run into a staff issue. So we may run into a few days where we know we're just not going to have enough staff to leave a particular building open. We may need to make the decision to close that school and do remote learning for those few days if that's the case. I certainly know plenty of schools in this state who've had to close for two weeks. In fact, we were required to do that early on in the process when we had to close Hillcrest for two weeks, and that was because we didn't have enough staff to make it safe. So we'll continue to go day by day as we make our decisions. No one is trying to make any decisions that are overly courageous, but we want to look at our local health data, our local situation, and that's when the governor gave superintendents the responsibility to make these decisions, is because we can look at the exact situation that's happening here in Trumbull versus what might be happening in a town that's many, many, many miles away from us. A couple other pieces of this. One other thing, actually, two other things that we've done. Teachers were requesting some additional teacher shields, K5. They wanted an opportunity to have an additional barrier, so when they're working with children, perhaps a little bit closer, one-on-one, to be able to provide feedback. So we use part of our coronavirus relief funds in order to buy every K5 teacher one of those shields. They have all those. I received a recent request through my reopening advisory committee to purchase 2,500 student shields. So these are those dividers that actually sit on every child's desk. So we are expecting 2,500 of those desk shields in the next week or so. I was told it could be as early as this Friday. It may be a little bit longer, because sometimes that occurs. Given the fact that we're not planning at this point to go full and in-person at the middle school or high school, we are not purchasing those because they have much more distance between the students at the middle school and the high school at this time. And then if, people need to know, parents especially, that we may need to pull back. We may need to take our K5 classes, or we may need to go back to a hybrid model. You're going to see some districts maybe even taking the decision to just close school. And I have to respect every superintendent's decision to do that, because, again, they know what specifically is happening in their particular district. But parents need to know that here in Trumbull, if we start getting too many cases on one particular day, we may need to close for a short period of time, and we may also make the decision that we need to scale back to hybrid. At this time, we're going day by day, week by week, and we're going to continue with our status quo. But I think parents, I'm sure they're thinking of this, but they need to know that things can change, and as we get more into the winter season, things likely will change. So those, that's the updates that I have around reopening, and I hope that clarifies some of the information that some people have asked me about.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Dr. Semel, I guess the one question I have is, are we seeing any spread in the schools? Because the way it seems to me right now, as a parent and as a Board of Ed member, I get these emails, and like, tonight we got one, a case at Hillcrest, a case at Trumbull High, a case of, it seems like there's a case in all the different schools. Are there multiple cases in any of these schools? Are you seeing any spread? That's my one question.
So there certainly has been multiple cases in our schools, but not from the spread, you know, not from a spread from a positive case. At least, that's been our situation so far. So we haven't had a number of positive cases that lead to other positive cases in the same building. But Hillcrest has had a few cases, Madison has had a few cases, Trumbull High School's had a few cases. So yes, there's been multiple cases, but there hasn't been any indication of spread. I talk to our Director of Nursing, Lynn Steinbrick, at least daily, probably five to 10 times daily, and she is also directly connected to our Department of Public Health person in Trumbull, Lucy Vango, and they talk often as well. There's been no indication of any spread within our building, but that's something we want to continue to pay attention to. So like I said, we have, I think we'll continue to see this daily email from me, never know which school might have that case pop up, and if it becomes too much, then we'll have to rethink our position.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Ward?
Last I mentioned transportation, any difficulties with the buses or pickup and drop-off at the schools?
There's more students on the bus at this time. We're still following all the guidelines in terms of buses. One thing that has come up from elementary principals in particular is it's a little bit more challenging to contact trace on the bus, and so we've actually purchased stickers for all the buses, so we can label every bus seat, and that way our principals can work to make sure they know where our children are sitting specifically on the bus. So those should be actually installed, I would say. When I say install, I mean it's a sticker, so, yeah, we put them on the seat. But those should be put up next week, because we've had some trouble. Sometimes our little guys are pretty short, you can't even see them on the videotape. We gather the videotape and try to do our contact tracing. So know that it's continued to be working fairly well. We haven't seen any spread on our bus either. But again, we're, we, to add one more piece, you guys know I listen to my weekly seminar, webinar with the Department of Public Health, and now they're really focusing on the fact that mask-wearing is the primary thing we need to do. In fact, they brought up ventilation, because ventilation is coming up as the winter weather gets colder. They're saying, listen, you do want to try to provide some fresh air into the room, but even as you're decreasing the amount of air into the, the fresh air into the room, it's so important you have people wearing their masks. And I got to tell you, our kids, our staff-- And I got to tell you, our kids, our staff have been absolutely terrific around mask wearing. And so we want to just make sure we continue to push that particular mitigation strategy, plus all the other ones, because they all are additive mitigation strategies.
My second question about contact tracing. Procedure, who is responsible for making all this information? Or they're able to determine if a child is with a problem? How is the procedure? Did he explain to me what happened?
Sure. That's kind of a, there's kind of a long answer to that.
Well, it's short. Why don't I?
Okay, so.
Who's actually the responsible person or people that have to do this?
Myself, the principals. That's the short answer.
In other words, you're responsible for contact tracing? There were all the pupils that come down with?
Correct.
How much time does that take?
It's taking an inordinate amount of time.
That's what I bring up. The fact is that we're having to be inside, not outside. We should take a look at that, Madam Chair. There must be some other way without putting some pressure on you and your department if you always work on contact tracing. I doubt the department is not involved in this.
I've asked about this, and the Department of Public Health in Trumbull is not staffed in order to.
They're not staffed.
So, yeah, we brought it up with the Commissioner Cardona. We brought it up at the State Department of Public Health. They know that districts are doing their best to do this. But a lot of the work really comes down to principals notifying me, working with Lynn Steinbrick, who is the director of nursing. She does a tremendous amount of work herself on this, making sure we know exactly which dates we're supposed to be looking at in terms of when a positive case had been infectious and then in our buildings. And then Christina Heathaway, who's on our administrative team, has been instrumental in developing queries. So we do a lot of infinite campus queries to be able to develop the groups of students who have identified as close contacts, so I can send out group emails. So those group emails do, in fact, come from me. And sometimes when I send them out, like today, I sent out something and there was actually a little error in what I did. You know, it happens. And so I had to send out a couple of mea culpa's to try to straighten things out. So it's.
Well, do you want to say superintendent? This is something statewide.
This is pretty statewide.
Responsibilities, every superintendent must do what you're doing, is that it?
I don't know how every superintendent is doing this, but.
They delegate that to a different person on the personnel, I guess.
Some are able to, yep. But a lot of these come through the superintendent and their superintendents are dealing with it.
It's all for a time, right, John?
Well, they have to, because they're here.
I understand that, but there must be some other way. The legal, there's also all the HIPAA, there's all the HIPAA pieces too, so everything is very confidential, so.
There's HIPAA pieces. One of the things that when you look at the state, they say how many contact tracers the state has. I never have been offered any assistance from the state to give us some contact tracers. Maybe I can reach out to our governor and say, can we borrow some of those contact tracers? Because we kind of need to run our schools too.
But the principal tells you, these are the students that you have to notify, is that right?
Yep. The principals are very involved with this. They're very busy with doing this. They think they're lucky stars when they don't have a day, but it seems like every day, one of them is contacting me. So there's always seems to be a day where we're sending out a message from A school, but.
It's a big burden for the superintendent, plus we're on the system that's sending out. The last question I have is on the lunchroom.
Yeah.
Program, any changes? Are still eating in the classroom, elementary?
Elementary is still eating in the classroom. I think some of the principals have explored what they could do in the, in their cafeterias. I don't know of any yet who have moved there, but you couldn't quote me on that, just in.
I thought you.
Yeah, but the middle schools have gone into the cafeterias. The high schools have been using the cafeteria. And like I said before, every table and every seat at the middle school and high school is labeled and numbered to make the contact tracing process more efficient.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Our next item is later school start time update. Everybody, committee members, please.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight, everybody. And this is our presentation of our final work on the later school start time committee that the board asked us to begin in July 2020. And board members here in the room have a packet, but Michelle is projecting this to everybody in the public this evening. And so briefly on the background, I should say that I will be joined by three members of our committee, although the cover sheet indicates that Kira Kiki Grant is with us tonight. She actually is delivering a book for Athletic and Mark Banquet tonight, so she expresses her regret. But the background to this committee is shown on the second slide, which is, as you know, that in February 2019, because this topic has a fairly long history by board standards, there was a presentation by consultant Jonathan Costa to this board, or previous version of this board, about some exploratory work that was done by a prior committee. I was not on that prior committee. Many of you were on the board at the time. And Mr. Costa had done some consulting work with that committee. We fast forward, at least for purposes of this slide, to March 2020. And Dr. Raskin, as I'm sure you'll remember, to this board, presented research relating to scientific benefits of later school start time. Fast forward that a little bit to July, we were in this room exactly this way at this time. And the board established a committee and asked that we come back with a final report in November 2020. So that's what we're doing this evening. And I want to say, if you follow some of the research over the past few months, there's actually continuing research on the topic of later sleep times, even during the COVID-19 pandemic, and what does the influence of that show, what does it reveal? So the topic still was a pertinent one. And that brings us to the committee charge, and I've come back to this a few times. What you unanimously asked us to do back in July was this, to determine what implementation of later school start times would look like and require in Trumbull. And back in July 2020, you asked us to assume, for purposes of this committee, that there was benefit to the scientific data behind later school start time. But what seemed to not really be clear at that point, from the 2019 all the way back to 2018, the 2020 work, was exactly what it would look like and require in Trumbull. So that was the charge of the committee. It's not my committee. It's the board's committee. It's the town's committee. It's the committee that was charged to be representative. And so what you'll see tonight, I am really proud to say, is the good work of that committee. And the next slide represents those members of the committee. I want to dignify all of them. If we were in a different place in terms of COVID, we might have all of them presenting in some form. But I do want to say, and this gets to the next slide, please, Michelle. The committee and the process, I would suggest, is some model for the board about strong committee work. It certainly, in my judgment, would be an improvement over the prior committee from 2018, 2019, which the board, at least some members of the board, had concerns about. But as we promised back in July, this committee has been transparent. There is a section of our website devoted to the agendas, minutes, and recordings of our meetings. We had five total meetings, and we had a discernment process that I'll describe in a moment that has moved toward tonight's presentation. So what you see tonight is the result of consensus among the committee. And various members of the group who are here with me tonight will speak about that. If you go to the next slide, Michelle, we asked the committee on the very last meeting to reach some consensus about key things that they might want to bring to you. What are some key things that have kind of undergirded all of this? And these are two that were mentioned many times by the committee members. First of all, all the presented options of this committee will affect students, parents, teachers, and after-school programs. The goal is to find the best solution that will impact our children in a positive manner. And I should say, one might say the best solution is the current solution. That you might say doing nothing at all is the best solution. But we have some options that we'll present. And then another theme that was appealing to many people on the committee was the second one you see here. Change is hard at first, then people adapt, and in time, it becomes common practice. So with that, I'm going to move to the next part of our presentation, which you might say are some key factors that relate to most or even all options for later school start time. And to review these slides will be Sarah Scripati, who's representing our teachers tonight. And as many of you know, Sarah is an outstanding technology integration specialist for Trumbull High School. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, everyone. So these are some key factors that really weave their way through every single one of the conversations and the options that we have. So first, there is student transportation. So as I guess you know, bus transportation is required by state statute for all of our students. The way that our student transportation works is that we have bus tiers. And a tier is one level of bus service. So current language on the public schools has two tiers that are based on the secondary run, which is from 7:30 a.m. and then to 2:30 p.m. And then the elementary to 8:35 a.m., 3:20 p.m. So there's a fifty-minute minimum needed between the bus tiers. So that means that when one bus run ends, they need fifty minutes in between to start the next bus run. So as we were thinking about every option that will be presented to you, any change in the start or end time must really meet the transportation parameters for being able to pick up every student. So then the next key factor would be our special student population. We have two of those that come to mind right away, and that is aquaculture. That's our aquaculture program for the high school students. Currently, there's 149 students who are part of that program. They leave Trumbull High at approximately noon on Monday through Friday to participate or write the aquaculture score. We also have RCA, which is the Regional Center for the Art. And currently, we have 23 students who leave Trumbull High at approximately 1:45, Monday through Thursday. So as we think about whatever options are keeping what we have now, to what extent will a change in the THS start and end time impact these populations, the special student population?
Do you have any questions?
Absolutely.
Where's AgriScience coming in?
AgriScience actually is part of our current, is part of our current student population. So any start and end time would be worked into the current Trumbull High School schedule. So there wouldn't be as many, so if a start and end time change while they are a special student population, they would not be necessarily a transportation impact. So, does that make sense?
Yep.
Oh, so the key factor for athletics. So now we're up to athletics. Athletics have about 1,050 students and approximately 1,500 different spots. So that means that sometimes you have someone who is a pre-teen athlete, so they would obviously would be participating more of the year. Games typically begin at four o'clock, although when I talked to my team about this, you reminded me that there are some, there are some sports that just start earlier, like, for example, golf, that needs to be played, you know, earlier in the afternoon. And that varsity football games are generally held in the evenings and the lates. So, but that's their typical schedule is that games generally begin around 4:00 p.m. And then some other SEC schools with later than usual is for dismissals are Greenwich and Wilton. So we talked about looking at what they do. And then our key question here would be, to what extent will a change in the THS end time impact these students? So it's really not what happens at the beginning of the day. It really is what happens at the end. Do you have any questions about that? And then lastly, our last key factor that weaves its way through all of the, all of the things that we talked about would be the length of the day versus the instructional hours. So the length of the day is the time from the first bell to the last bell. So currently, Trumbull High School is third in the length of day of 153 Connecticut high schools. For instructional hours, that's the time spent actually in class learning. So this attracts the time for passing, homeroom, lunch. So currently, Trumbull High School is 65th of 153 Connecticut high schools. So another question to consider is to what extent will a change in the length of day impact the instructional hours in this school? All right. And so those are, that leads us to our next step of the need implementing options. So does anyone have any other questions about any of those key factors? All right, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bud.
Instructional hours, am I right, Marty? Nine hundred?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Are we over the nine hundred?
We are over the nine hundred.
We've been over the nine hundred for a long time. There's not many schools that are over the nine hundred hours.
They all.
You did find that out, right?
They're all over.
They're all over. They're all.
Nine hundred is the minimum.
Nine hundred is.
Yeah, but we have a little more than that, I think. Trumbull High School had that. The last report that I did when I was there, we had more instructional time than other high schools.
Yeah, sixty, 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 sixty-five, sixty-fifth out of 153 high schools.
Just wanted to make sure you mean that.
Okay. And if you are interested, we do have the breakdown of all the, you know, of all the different schools and how many special, and it's been the length of day for all the schools. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. So I'm on the transitional slide here because this slide, the board saw when I gave an update report in October. And this will guide most of the rest of the presentation. So there is an infinite technically number of ways that you could modify the times. But basically, they fall into these four groups, which is how we'll structure the rest of tonight. The first option is that we could keep the two-tier bus structure in times, but swap elementary and secondary. The second, we could keep the two-tier bus structure, but move all start times later. The third, keep the two-tier bus structure, but move the high school times alone to align with the elementary times. And the fourth, we could add a third tier to the bus structure and have three different sets of start and end times. And because we talked about, or I talked about, these options we gave in October as the current status of the committee, that's how we're going to structure it tonight. But we're going to start with Rob Martini, one of our parents on the committee, speaking about options three and four. And then we'll be moving to options one and two. And I'll give away a little bit of the surprise before Rob comes up. The committee would have a consensus that options three and four are relatively unfeasible for Trumbull at this particular time, or perhaps at any time, but compared to options one and two. And we'll talk more about that at the end. But we're going to start with three and four because we're going to get the options that are least feasible out of the way early. I'm very pleased to have Rob Martini, who's a parent to children in the district here this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Thank you for having me tonight. Our option three, keep the two-tier bus structure, but move Trumbull High School times to align with elementary times. So the middle schools would be 7:30 to 2:30, Trumbull High, 8:35 to 3:20. And elementary schools, 8:35 to 3:20. To Dr. Bud's point, the highlight here would be that it would focus primarily on the high school. So that would be the health benefits criteria for grades nine through twelve. And we did work this red for a bit simply because it was logistically simple compared to this of the others. You have to consider variables outside of the high school, because the elementary student day, it wouldn't be impacted. But when we altered inside, there was a high transportation cost for us, roughly $2 million for, I think, 21 of those buses. It had to hire 30 drivers, which costs money, which is a difficult profession. It had to hire 30 drivers, which costs money, which is a difficult profession now. And probably most importantly, grades six through eight would be left out of the solution. If you harken back to the presentation about health benefits, the sixth grade through eighth grade are definitely in that group that you want to try and give them additional sleep, but they're also benefit from the physiological benefits of extra sleep. Then we look at option four. And here, the middle schools would switch from 7:20 in the morning to 2:20 in the afternoon. Trumbull High from 8:15 to 3:50. And the elementary schools from 9:05 to 3:50. And again, that's the third tier to the bus structure with three different sets of times. Again, on the positive side of the ledger here, this meets the articulated health needs for grades nine through 12. There's also a transportation cost associated. It's much less than the others, only about $400,000. And that would be tied to extended hours for the bus drivers as opposed to extra buses or more buses. But in this scenario, grade six through eight, they would actually have an earlier start time. So not only would they not take advantage of the benefits that we would hope for in Trumbull, the earlier start time would actually be going in the wrong direction. So it's a bit of a non-starter. And then, of course, an earlier or later day for elementary students could potentially have for some families a negative impact. So for those reasons, we really thought about our balance. And given the fact that there are other options that negate the cost problem, potentially cost negligible or very low cost, and the fact that there are other options, but we didn't have to make those trade-offs for certain students, we just felt that it's very important to focus on a couple other approaches. But we did look at these.
I have a question.
Yes.
So in all four of these options, K through two is grouped in with K through five. So whatever you did with K through five, they would all be going at the same time currently.
With all four of these? I don't think we'd stratify it.
With all four of these?
Yeah.
Right? So my issue with that is, I actually, I have latest school start times in the world. Many people know that, and I'm a teacher at work. And we have a different setup there where our schools are K through two, and then we have K through five schools. Our times are drastically different, our start times. And as far as I know, studies show that K through two students also need to start school later. They can't be on the very early schedule. They're our latest group in the world. They start later than our school. I believe they're like 9 o'clock start time as well as existing. So have we talked about that group? Because they really shouldn't be, at least from what I know, they shouldn't be grouped in with K through five. I teach fifth grade, and we're the earliest. We're at 7:20 in the morning. And then K through two is more like 9 o'clock, it's about a two-hour difference. So I'm just wondering if we've explored that at all in any of these options, because I don't really see that.
You know, my experience with the discussion, the closest we came to the fact that they were stratification was some discussion around the logistics of the bus schedules themselves. And there's a lot of discussion about what about K through five, starting earlier, younger kids. And there appeared to be a couple of different ways that you could approach the schedules with the buses to bump up at least some of the start times here when they would actually be picked up.
Right.
Start time would be different, but the bus schedule would be different. As you know, some of these kids are on the bus for a long time in the morning. So if you can shorten some of those routes through working logistics, you might be able to solve for some of that. But I don't think, and I'll defer to you, Dr., but I don't think we particularly looked at K through two as its own group and could be worked out.
Doesn't mean we couldn't say... Because we have that brief right now, right, with COVID and everything that we've broken them off. K through two, you know, different, like a hybrid method and not the hybrid method, and they were our first learners back. So we have some experience with breaking that group, even though those groups are all the same schools. But I think it's something that we really need to look at. Because again, we've been doing it for almost 20 years in Wilton. And I know that that really young group cannot be grouped in with participators who are raring to go at 7:20 in the morning. And kindergarteners are not raring to go at 7:20 in the morning. So I just have a real concern with that. And I hope that we can wrap that into, you know, further discussion, further options. Because I just don't see it here, and I feel like we're leaving that to follow a bit.
Okay. So I know these stuff can count for other people, for budget people, breaking up the K through two and then three through grade three or four. And I'm not sure I would have looked at the big problem that we have, the pushback was parents tend to be very assertive when their kids are young adults. So please pick two schools, like Jane Ryan and Castle. Say Castle became the K through two school, Jane Ryan became the K through four. While there was a lot of pushback, Jane Ryan's young, I would say Jane Ryan, Castle, their, I would say Castle. If you were able to do it in one school, I don't know if that's a good idea. We are actually looking at the one school became the K through two, the other school could be K through four. At the time, maybe young changed because that maybe was the only one out of the board. We will get it off the budget. It was a lot of pushback. All right.
We're less far.
I have a question. Does low transportation cost, what is that cost?
What size?
The option one.
It says low, what is low?
So we haven't presented that one yet, but Brian Rickert is here to talk about options one and two.
Good evening, everybody. So I'll go through these options relatively quickly, since I know you have a lot of questions. But option one would keep the current two-tier bus power that we already have in place, but we would swap the times for elementary and secondary. So you have the elementary schools starting at 7:30 and going to 2:30. And then you have grade six through 12 going from 8:35 to 3:20. Some considerations with that. That time would meet the health target that we're trying to hit for those secondary students that the professional presented on way back in March. And there would be a relatively low transportation cost. Dr. Bud, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I believe it was considerably low, especially compared to the other options. Other considerations to consider there are that there would be child care impacts for families that have elementary students. I don't want to speculate if those would be positive or negative, but there's no way around it, there would be impacts to child care. Also, some bus routes for elementary students would start in the dark at the time of year if they're being picked up. Option two, again, keeping the two-tier bus structure, probably remove all start times later. So the secondary schools, grade six through 12, start at 8:00 a.m. and go to 2:30. And notice that school day is roughly a half an hour shorter for both secondary schools than you currently have. And then elementary would go from 8:50 to 3:55. So secondary would start 30 minutes later, elementary would start 15 minutes later. And then just a couple of considerations there. Again, doesn't meet that target that we're trying to hit of having students at the secondary level start school later than currently do. And again, that would be a relatively low transportation cost compared to the other models. Again, I don't have the specific number, but I'm sure you'll get that for us.
And that was number two, correct?
That's option two. Yep. And then again, there would be internal schedules that we'd have to look at, the secondary level for the middle and high school. Again, don't want to speculate on positive or negative or how much instructional time could potentially be lost. But if we're starting a day a half an hour later than anything at the same time, we would have to look at bell schedules for the middle and high school. And then potential contraction implications if they have employee groups. Again, we're starting a half hour later and anything at the same time. Want to make sure that we don't create other, having unintended consequences for that model.
Brian, I have a question. I don't see how it would be an internal scheduling issue because at the high school, you have a 45-minute lunch. That should get cut down to 28 minutes. And now, and those other minutes go to instructional time. So that's not, I don't think that would be an issue once you look at a schedule. And I'm sure that people in the high school have looked at schedules before.
Certainly not an insurmountable challenge, but we wouldn't be able to use the same bell schedule in middle school or high school, they would have the chance. But you're right, there are opportunities to try to say like, hey, instead of a 45-minute lunch, we do that differently.
Right, because I think we're the only school district that has a 45-minute lunch at the high school level. So I don't think, you know, you need that many minutes for that. But that's something that you have to look at and, you know, they would have to discuss. As far as the administration would have to look at that and see what they can do.
And at the middle level...
And can you explain a little bit what means the contractual implications, please?
Yeah, so again, don't want to speculate what that can mean. But as of right now, speaking of middle school teachers with schools starting at 7:35, they're 15 minutes early, so they, you know, come through the door at 7:20, school ending at 2:30. Contractually, the earliest they leave is 2:45. So by shortening the day, we don't want to create a different issue in terms of how long that they're in the building, anything like that. Is that fair, Dr. Bud?
Yes, awesome. I would say there are also implications for non-certificated groups. In that option, where hours of school will change because we have non-certificated groups, such as parent educators who are paid that buy-up based on service hours with students. So if a late student day or a change is a potential contractual implication for that group.
First question, when you keep on saying low transportation cost, the cost is not going to change that we have right now, two tiers, right?
With options one and two, the reason that there is potentially some, and it's low, transportation costs is, you know, some of the transportation costs in our budget is for special education transportation. And right now, we have a fixed budget for transportation that takes that into account. If we were to change our start times, there's a potential additional cost for some of the special education transportation. And that's going to come out a little bit in a second in terms of what I might suggest, what the committee might suggest could be in that steps to consider. But we want to be clear, although options three and four are the transportation cost, options three and four are expensive. Options one and two for a bus transportation cost are not zero. There's probably some cost.
But it's the same now, right? We have two-tier system. What is going to change? Did I miss something?
Well, some of our students who have transportation to special one schools that are not in our 10 schools, those schools aren't necessarily going to change their times. So there's a potential additional cost for some of those students. At least based on this Perkins analysis, which I would rely on for sure at the moment.
But we have a two-tier system now.
Correct.
I mean, why expose out the two, it's a two-tier system?
That's right.
Why haven't we lowered the cost?
Oh, option two. The reason there is some additional cost on option two is the same reason that there's some additional cost for option one. While you, while let's say in option two, you would have all of our typical students attending secondary at 2:30. In this example, all of the elementary at 8:30 to 3:35. You could have more specialized transportation vehicles needed to run students at other times based on when those specialized schools operate.
Even isn't that normal? We do that anyway.
Sure, I'm not going to second guess here what our transportation manager says about that.
I would like, I mean, that's what we do now.
Yeah.
We have two tiers, and we do have special transportation for different...
But Lucinda, this may increase the number because every school that we would be sending people to would be on the schedule that matches our schedule now. If they have that schedule and we have a different schedule, we'll have to spend a little more money to get our kids to the special program because they have the right to go to that special program.
That would be, yep, I understand. And that would be the same thing with students coming in in agri-science. Because the bus system is at different times from different cities, so towns. So that would be another issue if we started at different times and they started at different times. There's going to be a bus issue with sending people, isn't that correct?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay. That's why I asked about the agri-science before. I understand what you're saying, thank you.
So our committee's consensus would be these five proposed steps for the board to consider. Our group, I think, as I said before, has been a really productive model of democratic process. We had a consensus that we would ask you to continue the committee's work, but to allow, and this, I think, supports what I heard at least Mr. Dallas speaking about, taking options three and four potentially off the table. Because for one, they're very expensive in terms of bus transportation at a time when the district, to put it simply, has some financial challenges. But narrowing the focus on options one and two, and there are some nuances of one and two relating to what you brought up, K two versus three, five, really digging down into the transportation details. And also this last point of that first book, situating the work in larger wellness conversations and things. For example, there was some concern by some student members of our committee that if activities and homework after school continued to be the same way in the duration, would that offset potential health benefits that we would try to get at with later school start time? We put some people say, well, will students just stay up an hour later? So there's a sense of some committee members that we don't want to totally study this in isolation, but understand some related things. The second point here is really, we would think that if the board wanted to continue to investigate options one and two, there's some need for a family survey. So we can speculate, your committee members can speculate, okay, is 7:20 too early? 6:45, 7 o'clock, too early for a parent to want their elementary school student waiting for a bus? But by the same token, there were committee members who felt, and we've heard here sometimes, that parents might be willing to take that. So some kind of survey of where our community actually is on that could potentially be helpful. Third, the committee felt that, just as you brought up some additional factors tonight, we would need to investigate options one and two more in terms of specific about those student special populations and athletics, as well as some related, but really essential pieces of the Trumbull public schools' experience, such as TLC, and also in terms of traffic and the traffic patterns around the town. And at some point, I go back to when we have so many options on the table, we can't study everything in sufficient depth. So taking options three and four off the table, we would recommend, would allow a slight derailed focus to study. Finally, or next to last, as Brian already mentioned, there are details of what those internal schedules would look like, the shifts that would have to be made for option two for both middle school and high school. And the board would have to be more informed about that. And then finally, there are districts. Connecticut districts are the most reasonable to study. Wilton is one. There are others, both in Fairfield County and around the state who have implemented this. Some have implemented it recently and have learned through some of the states what to do and what not to do. Others have implemented it a while ago. But we had a great dialogue through all of our meetings, as well as this past one. And certainly, I can say for everybody who attended that last meeting, who felt that if the board wanted to have this group continue to drill down into options one and two, they would be interested in being your representatives in doing that. If the board's wish was to say, thank you, you've done the task we asked you to do, we're happy not to have you do any more with it, we'll be fine with that too. But we've accomplished the charge you asked of us. I appreciate personally and professionally you're allowing me to chair the group. And I do think it has been a more transparent process than the board has had in the past on this particular topic today.
Okay, so based on what you said, you touched upon different tactics, and I think that's making everyone think a little bit. But I think that you do need to look at further at other things. The after-school job. Our students don't have disposable income, they do go and they do work. And how do their jobs affect it? And then we have our faculty who live in different towns, and maybe their children are attending schools at different times. We look at that. So there's other issues that you need to look at to decide what's the best for the fall around. And you would really need to, I don't know, have you spoken to the faculty? Has the faculty put any...
Need faculty survey.
We were not able, or probably willing to do that prior to November and coming back to you and asking you what your... If this board were to say, continue, if we want one of... Certainly, a family survey is a non-starter in terms of the sense, no, right, or I should say, not a non-starter. Must be the opposite. Must be, if the opposite must be done. Certainly, a faculty survey is another one. Graphic studies we talked about. But that all depends on whether the board wants us to keep working or not.
Lucinda, could I ask a question?
One minute, Mrs. Noystoff, he's still speaking.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. South, I was just saying, I think it would be irresponsible to get tons of surveys out there. Before coming back to you, I'll say this is where we are.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Mrs. Noystoff.
What I want to know, Lucinda, do you, you as board chair, Jonathan, as chair of this committee, want a motion to have the committee go and do those next steps? If, if the board so wants it, make it, you know, a recommendation and do it as in the com, as in?
I'd like the opportunity.
Do that, but if, I would like somebody to make a motion if they want to. Scott, do you want to make a motion?
No, I'd actually like to continue discussion for a couple of minutes before we do that because it might change what the motion would be. But if, one thing I want to say just right, right at the start, so I don't miss the opportunity later, Dr. Bud, is to thank you for your leadership on the committee and, and all the members. I attended a couple of the sessions and watched the videos. And, you know, it really was terrific work. So, so thank you for that. One thing I just, I do want to go on the record to say, I want to be careful not to write off any options, you know, based on, you know, one particular factor. So for instance, option four, I frankly wouldn't, you know, I personally wouldn't, wouldn't think twice about maybe spending $400,000 to get the benefits for our students in terms of their health and their academic potential. That's, that's a price I think is, is in the realm of a good value. But it, on that option, it, what, the one, the showstopper for me is the idea of having the, the middle schoolers go earlier, right? So before we just write off option four or any of them, I think there may be components of each that you might want to, you know, either reincorporate, right? Like maybe a three-tier, but arranged differently would, would work. So that's just one, one piece of feedback on that. And then the other big one for me is the elephant in the corner of the room. And I'm, I don't want to blow up your presentation bringing this up, but something has to be done about the high school schedule to begin with, right? Like going, we, I thought we heard a presentation much earlier in the year that we need to move to an eight-period day. And, and shouldn't that be part of this work?
Yes, the brief answer to that would be, and I think you're referring to the presentation Mr. Gureno gave November twenty, twenty nineteen.
Right.
The agro-science building, a board presentation, the agro-science building. That was about possible changes to the high school schedule.
Right.
I think in reference to your point, Scott, we would say option two would almost certainly require that. That could be done with any of the options. It could actually be done right now, as a matter of fact, well, not right now, but it could be, and it could be done at the current start time. However, option two, as Perk wrote, moves the start time of the high school day, but not the end time. So that probably requires looking at exactly what this is typically talked about, things like the length of the lunch period and things like that. It would have to be done for option two, but it could be done for all sorts of options.
What I, what I really like about that option is that it allows for the younger ones. We, we, we think, you know, we're getting about the community gardeners in the, in the first years. It allows them to also deliver to school rather than have it be the early group, which they should not be. They, they absolutely should not be.
Okay, does anyone else have a comment before I ask? I, I do believe that you do need to move forward, Dr. Bud. I think that would be a good idea, just to find out, you know, you need some specificity on different things, different areas, things that everyone here has brought up. And that might be a good idea.
Just quickly, I'm reading this thing. What happens if we all start at the same time?
If, if all schools start at the same time?
Later time, yeah.
Well, that would be most similar to if, if all schools just have a later time. That would be similar to options.
Three.
Yes, it's also option three, there's a couple of options that would lead to. Oh, two, two is lower cost than three. Three is very cost.
So we put, open up all schools and say, well, the late night party, eight-thirty, nine-thirty?
Right, that's right. I, I think, just for clarity on the record of people, if, and I'm not sure this is exactly what you mentioned, if all schools in town were starting eight-thirty, take twelve, that would be a very expensive option. That's actually none of the use for, because that would require many more buses than both of them.
But can I ask another question?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. And Scott, we can have more discussions, but let me see if I can make this motion. It certainly would have a lot of discussion around it. So I would like to make the motion that this committee who has done, by the way, a fantastic job. And thank you for your presentation and your dedication to this clause. I'd like to make the motion for the committee to continue. We certainly still have some questions. We have some things to, to figure out. And it seems like this is the best committee to continue with this work. So I like, I would like to make a motion for this committee to continue. Do I have a second? And then we could have some discussion.
Mrs. Petiti, just a second. Okay.
Any discussion?
Now, if anyone wants to add anything, but I think that would be a good idea, Dr. Bud.
We, we would agree.
Okay, you agree, great. Okay, I will take the vote then.
Well, can we go back to asking any other questions or?
Oh, sure. If you have any other questions on his presentation, you can.
Dr. Bud, regarding like an, an option like option two, I mean, there's nothing sacred about those specific times either, right? Like we, if we, if we wanted to prioritize the secondary schools starting later, you know, like going to eight fifteen or eight thirty, you could move that end time later as well and, and shift everything by fifteen minutes or so, right?
With all the options, I, I wouldn't want anyone to get hung up on, say, eight forty-five versus.
Right.
Because at some point, they're placeholders. I think the key thing is how many tiers do we have? And which level comes earliest versus latest? Do remember Ms. Graffani's point that comes from Ms. Perkins. We really have to have fifteen minutes minimum between tiers because we have to be able to get kids dropped off at one school and then move through town to start picking up the next ones. So that's the critical piece. But you're right, with all of these options, frankly, there can be shading of times in one.
Right. I mean, my main, my main issue is I don't, I don't want, you know, there to be any absolutes in what, you know, what goes from the pages of your presentation to, you know, a final recommendation that you. There's a lot of, as, as, you know, Tim said, there's a lot, a lot of work still to be done and, and questions to answer. But I'm certainly in, in support of, of your great group continuing the work.
I think you did a marvelous job.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Okay, I knew that was coming.
I think that's true, nearly everyone who comes up.
Okay, I'd like to take, I'd like to take the vote now for this.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Andy.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just, you know, again, I'd like to as well thank Dr. Bud and the committee, fabulous job. I'm in total support of this continuing. But, you know, my concern, and, and I know Dr. Bud will take care of this with his survey that goes out to the, to the parent community. But I always think of, since it was the situation that I was in, my kids are one in middle school and one in high school, so they're a little older now. But I can think back to the elementary years and, you know, we were a dual-working family. And the impacts that this would have on a dual-working family, I don't, I don't want to see any portion of our, our parents put in a situation where they need to spend more money because we're moving times around. And I also think of the single-parent families that are out there. And I know you'll keep them in mind and I know you're going to send out your survey. And hopefully you ask these sort of questions in the survey, you know, financial impacts that this may have on the families, on Trumbull families. So I just want to thank you for everything you've done. I think you're doing a great job and I look forward to seeing this go on and, and come to some sort of conclusion. But thank you.
Thank you, Andy, you brought up some good points, thank you. Okay, let me take the vote, Mrs. Petiti. Okay, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
In favor.
Scott Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Paylo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Okay, unanimously, thank you, Dr. Bud, thank you, committee members that came tonight. Thank you very much for all the work you've done, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, okay, we're going to move on to our next, is the Bridgeport Magnet School Tuition. Mr. Henderson.
As we discussed in the executive session, this is a settlement agreement where no one changes hands between the districts. This is a subtle longstanding dispute and starting ground here over this year, this year being twenty twenty-one, for payments for from Trumbull to Bridgeport Magnet Schools and from Bridgeport to then Trumbull Agriculture Science Facility. I'd also like to ask you to authorize the superintendent to sign.
Okay, so just to clarify for everyone out there, there was an issue that we had with Bridgeport and how much money that we thought they owed us and they thought we owed them, to put it very simply. And this went on for about four years and it started with Mr. O'Keefe as our business manager. And then now it's come to an end. And I think it's come to a good end because it's, it's a flat rate. We don't owe anything and they don't owe any things to us. So we started zero. So I think that's a good thing. So Mr. Henderson had asked for a motion.
Yes, I can make that motion, Madam Chair. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization of the superintendent to authorize the Bridgeport Magnet School tuition agreement proposed by Mr. Henderson.
Second the motion.
Mr. Ward, second it, okay, any discussion? No, okay, all in favor. Mrs. Petiti? And Mr. Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Mrs. Norso?
In favor.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Paylo?
I'm going to have to abstain because I, I had middle school parent-teacher conferences earlier tonight and I missed the executive session, so I'm going to abstain on this.
Okay, one abstention, thank you. And Lucinda Timpinelli, I agree. Okay, in favor. Okay, we will do that and Dr. Civil, you have our approval to move on then. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Henderson, anything else?
Not a new topic, Madam Chairman. The next topic would be for the board to approve the September thirtieth, twenty twenty financial report, which was presented last, last month's evening. I failed to ask for approval and so we'll include that.
Okay, Mr. Ward, do you want to make that?
I'll make the vote to approve the last month's financial statement. Was it October twenty-seventh, I guess that was the date, or?
Yeah, yeah, at the meeting of October twenty-seventh. Okay, can I have a second? Mrs. Petiti, just a second, okay. Any questions on that? You just forgot to, you just forgot to vote on that. Okay, Mrs. Petiti? And Mr. Gallo?
Yes, I would agree.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Okay, Mrs. Norso?
In favor.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
And Mr. Paylo?
In favor.
And I'm in favor also. Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you.
The next topic would be to brief the board on the two outstanding grants that we have related to COVID. That would be the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, commonly known as ESR. We were approved and for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, you have to transfer to the school system. And that would use to purchase five hundred and thirty-six Winnebago laptops. The one that we just concluded in terms of application was the CRF grant for the virus relief fund grant. We applied for five million initially, we got approved for one point two million. There are three cat, excuse me, five categories, personnel services, salary, personnel services, benefits, other purchase services, supplies and property. Whereas the ESR grant was used to fund primarily laptops, which would assist students in studying at home. The CRF grant is restricted to bringing those students back. So it is for classroom dedicated services and protective equipment. So things such as sanitizer, additional soaps, face masks, disposable gloves, face shields and desk shields, which Superintendent Summell made reference to earlier. Also, in the property line, such things as touchless faucets, gang sinks and other exhaust fans, air purifiers. And we've worked closely with First Light Women and kept her and staff up to date, make sure we are following the appropriate purchasing policies. However, it has been a moving target initially. In that two-point-one grant that we, we were approved for, eight hundred thousand was dedicated to transportation. As was commented on earlier in the meeting, virtually nothing is required for transportation. We, we got that reallocated and I have a handout, I'll hand out when I finish of the items that we have dedicated the funds for. It was approved by up to three levels and it is ready to be funded upon our request through the E-grant system, which is a system that was recently developed for requesting funds. And we have, and also my omission, the funds cover expenditures from March fourth of two thousand twenty to December thirtieth of this year. That, that required extremely hard work on the, on behalf of our staff, putting together and coding their purchases or proposals as COVID. And Ms. Brandusi is seeking very, very detailed records and almost calling the state hourly to get approval. Can we have another thing? I, I can.
And just to clarify one thing, Mr. Henderson, when, when you first voted, you said one point two million and then later you said two point one. It is two point one million dollars, just, just to clarify for the record.
Two point one million?
Yes. Near, sound region would be substitute parents and substitute teachers. We have COVID support liaison, technicians, assistance in technology, benefits for these people, EPS out placements, and as I said, the four surgical masks, gloves, face mask, shield on desks, and various clean devices. And we are acquiring twenty-six two- or three-gang express touchless laboratory systems, a hundred and seventy-four touchless faucets. We're going to repair the roof top unit on the DHS auditorium to improve air circulation, purchasing seventy radios and H-SAC exhaust fan replacements. And also to go with those gang touchless laboratory systems, we're installing twenty-six shut-off valves so we don't have to shut off water to the entire building. Should, or repair it at a later date. And also there are some minor technology purchases, which included, I think, added access points and webcues and, and I'm available to entertain any questions from my house.
Go ahead.
Listen very carefully, can we get this, the future meetings, the planning of the meeting? Do you have, do you have to look at this at all?
No.
We didn't say that, no, he's presenting it now.
I know, so we, we were in the process up until. really earlier today.
Okay, no, I didn't.
And doing that, and I apologize for.
No, I like the already required, but I said, you know, you don't find many in the future. Something like this is something should have something black and white, but I can't remember.
I haven't.
That's perfect. All right, no, I.
No, I'd like, I'd like you, you and all board members to be aware of what we are contemplating, making decisions, solving.
That's correct. That's fine. But that'll be in next month's board meeting. Some kind of.
We can update you, but I could give you a list right now.
No, I'm glad.
Now, we do have the list right now. What I think has been interesting about this whole thing is that it's been a moving target throughout the entire process. So originally, we were told we were going to get this money and like Mr. Henderson said, $800,000 was going to be for transportation. So we thought that that was going to be money that we'd never be able to spend. But then we're able to get some flexibility a couple of weeks ago. So we started saying, okay, what, how can we use this money to open our schools? So it's been this moving target and making sure that the state would actually approve the items that we were talking about. So PEG has really been going back and forth, saying, well, would we get approval for this? Would we get, we don't want to put any money out there that we won't be reimbursed for. And one thing that the Board of Finance, one of the things that we're going to do, all is going to do a presentation. PEG is going to be present, PEG Rendese, Rendese is going to be present, I think. Board Chair Tim Finelli is going to be present as well. We're going to on Thursday share with the Board of Finance, because they've been very interested too about how we're going to use our CF, CRF funds. They can't tell the Board of Education what to do with the money, but they want to make sure that we're going to get reimbursed with the funds that we're getting from the federal government. The Board of Finance, understandably, would want to make sure we don't purchase things and then give death to them.
We get the money and our, the right thing that we just spend, we pay the bills for the money we get.
Yeah, and.
It doesn't go to the town at all, or I don't know how it works.
Well, most of our grants are still.
Right, so sometimes with the, with the grant money we get, like our ECS funds, if, if they all, they will often go to the town first because that's where it goes. But then it goes to fund our part of the budget. And the same thing happens with these types of grants. This is obviously a big grant at 2.1.
Um, does not approve this. We have, we get it and we approve it.
That's right. We get it, we spend it. The Board of Finance is just concerned that we're not, we're not buying things. They don't want us to buy things that we don't meet the criteria for being refundable. There's been some concerns around FEMA not necessarily refunding everything that maybe they said they were going to refund at the beginning of this process. And so there's a, I think folks are just a little bit gun child, say, to spend funds without seeing the money. It's one of those like, show me the money type situations. So PEG's been great trying to get the approval before we actually go ahead and make these purchases. However, there's also rules about the fact when we have to buy these things.
Because you had your report the night you were applying for this.
Out of this, yeah. Yeah, the student, those student shields are a perfect example of how we can use them to bring or take back in and keep them safe.
Plus, we also have to adhere to town purchasing rights, we have policies.
All right, Scott, you had your hand up there.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, maybe Paul said it, but I just wanted to hear it again. In all of the work that you guys have done over the last couple of weeks and PEG getting approval for things. So how, were we able to take advantage of the full amount of the grant, the full 2.1? Or what was the total of the, able to reimburse?
The full amount has been requested. It was approved by First Level, up at CSDE. It was approved by Kathy Dempsey, the CFO of Connecticut, the former of education. And it is approved by Jeff Lindgren, who funds all the grants. And he, he funds every grant that we request.
Awesome.
It's a real, it's a real time process now. It used to be pretty comprehensive. Now we can go online and request the money and it should be there within a couple of days at most.
Well, congratulations and thank you.
And one other brief topic I want to touch on is we have technology purchases. Through, through the years, it's been funded by a technology lease of TD Bank. There's been some concern by our external law officer that it should not be funded by, it not should be. The Board of Education should not be in California. It should be in town. Having them all, you should be able to create a town, having the board that, having the board that make the lease payments. The external law officer is touching base with the attorneys in craft, the initial language group, that series of leases, a couple of years ago, and some resolution, I'm not quite sure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, Paul. Okay, we're moving on to curriculum. Our committee report, Mr. Ward?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to bring attention to the, to all the board members about the report that is in the, before we get to the curriculum. The one level of public schools, pre-K 12 curriculum guides. Jonathan, but as the superintendent charged, each year, the last four or five years, the curriculum committee has asked, where are we, where are we going? I can give you an idea. And inside this package, very carefully, give you the time, all the curriculums in town, the dates, the procedures, what we've done, what we want to do, and plan things in the future. So this is a very important document and we get this annually at our meeting. So everybody knows what we're teaching in our public school is all the curriculum right here. Make the big reference to it. So that's the guide.
It is. It's next one guide. Thank you, Dr. Bud. It really is very clear. You can tell what is in progress, what, what are, what courses are new and what courses they're now, that are now completed. So it's a very good report. Thank you.
So tonight, Dr. Bud, we have a couple of approvals, courses we're going to talk about, and some curriculum guides. Dr. Bud?
Sure, if I can just take the privilege of saying a little bit more about that matrix. If you do what I do during Mr. Henderson's business report, you count, you count curriculum guide in that document. So I do, we're slightly between 250 and 300. But the point is, the curriculum committee over the past four years, which has been Mr. Ward, Ms. Petiti, and Ms. Tim Finelli have reviewed and have endorsed and brought to this board, which has reviewed and endorsed over 145 of these. And that's the mark of a really strong district. The curriculum writing is continuous. It's the best form of professional development for our teachers because they get to get together, really study standards, really think about how to agree any curriculum area to meet the needs of our current students. So it is, despite that we love the later school start time committee and we love the policy committee, the curriculum committee is where it happens. And that is a totally bipartisan effort of this Board of Education, prior boards. Great things for teaching in Trumbull. But I am pleased to be here with you tonight. We have a couple of new courses first. And I don't know, Ms. Tim Finelli, if you'd like a motion first on the event for me to speak, or you want me to speak first? I'll do either you'd like. You speak first and then we'll make a motion. So this time every year, we come to the board with potential new course proposals for the Trumbull High School Program of Studies, which has to be printed by the time you have your next meetings, right? And so this year we have two, and they're very important new courses. The first is entitled Health 11, Mindfulness and Movement. The Trumbull High School class of 2023, which will be juniors next year, is, as you know, under new graduation requirements. And they must take a physical education course and a health course every year. I want to say again, this board and prior boards forecasted that this would happen. And you started with a senior seminar course, you had Health 9, you moved back into Health 10 this past year. Well, now we need Health 11. And Mr. DeScala, who's the department chair of that group, has worked with his team to propose at this point a description that would work on the key areas of mindfulness and movement. Those two things that really in a comprehensive wellness program get students reflecting on themselves, but also active in movement, right? So it's not necessarily what we used to think of as the old health course, but it's, it's up and coming ways to get students thinking about wellness. This course would meet for one marking period for one quarter credit. And although I hate to say things are mandated because you ultimately have local control, you'll need to do this if you want these students to be able to graduate on time. And then we'll be able to come back and say, this is what the curriculum would look like for this course. And you do that in your normal process. The second course, and I'd be happy to answer questions on that. The second course matches a key district goal and that matches a key goal that we have in other areas of expanding students' perspectives around social justice and around people both similar to and different from themselves. You might remember that we talked about in the past that state legislation, Connecticut Public Act 1912, is mandated that every district in the state offer a course in these particular areas. And the title of the course, as well as the course description, come from the state of Connecticut. And it's African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican, Latino studies. It's a four-year course of the Social Studies Department. And in our scheme, it would be offered as an elective course to students in grades 10 to 12. So I want to be clear in saying that the board's requirement is to, the board's requirement is to offer the course. And then students can elect to take it. So it's not that every student must take it, although we might think that's a fine idea. Our mandate is to offer it. And about an hour before the meeting started, Ms. Robano, who's the Social Studies Department Chair at the high school, called me along with Mr. Cafferty, who is another social studies teacher at the high school. They attended a webinar this, today, they attended it. The State Department of Education is hosting these webinars this week as a way of introducing every district to this course. Mr. Guarino is attending a webinar tomorrow on this. And students would be in the course for the entire year. They learn about perspectives on these contributions to society. And the particular curriculum will be strongly influenced by the state curriculum on this and by state resources. But the thing I mentioned Ms. Robano and Mr. Cafferty for is I was pleased, and they were really surprised, that State Department mentioned in the webinar how Trumbull is seen as a leader in this kind of effort. And I would point out that our ability to get it on the ground for this allows us to help shape the conversation. We have a high school with 2,200 students. We are a model in many ways for diversity, and this is a natural addition as a reflective course for students. So I'll pause there because both of these courses come from the curriculum committee to the board for your approval tonight.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion and then we'll have a discussion. So can someone make the motion for me? Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so we'll be doing.
The approval of the new course proposal.
All right, so we're going to ask for approval of the new board to help the eleven, mindfulness and movement homeless, African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican, Latino.
Any second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I think you have, you said second. Okay, and Mr. Paylor said second. Okay, any discussion, any questions for Dr. Bud? No? Okay, I'll take the vote. And we, Petiti?
Oh, yes, in favor.
All right, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
Favor.
And Scott Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
Andy Paylor?
In favor.
And Lieutenant Tim Finelli, yes, in favor. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the curriculum guide.
These eight curriculum guides come to you from the November 5th meeting of the Curriculum Committee. And most of them are new or highly revised courses that, again, the board endorsed as ways to give students, particularly in the class of 23, more options toward graduation. Some of these used to be combined into long full-year courses, but making them half-year elected with revised curriculum has allowed for more flexible scheduling. So the first two are from our Visual Arts Department, which I would point out four years ago had two members and now has four strong members of that department with well oversubscribed courses. Visual Art and Design is a one semester foundation course. And Ms. Duran spoke to the Curriculum Committee about how it really is seen as an introduction to key ways that you could use artistic resources at the high school and encourages students then to pursue intermediate art courses. This course, like the next one, is linked to the National Core Art Standards. The second course is a new course you authorized last year in mixed media. You saw a need and you supported the high school administration's need to have some more intermediate art courses. And Mixed Media right away has attracted a strong student following, goes with their new arts credit for graduation. And Ms. Willett, who's at Trumbull High School this year, from Boothville Elementary last year, she spoke about the very ways in which this course looks both at culture and also at creating artistic products. I'll move next to several courses in our Business Education Department. And both through the Perkins Grant, as well as through the board budget, we are really blessed to have our career and technical education courses developed in an ongoing way. This next class is a web design class and it's now focused on HTML and CSS coding. Ms. Tartaglia spoke about how the revision was necessary there because the students coming in from, to the high school now have much more digital literacy from the middle school than they used to. So this coding class has moved in a new direction. The fourth curriculum guide this evening is the Business of Fashion. Fashion as a general course used to be in our family, the Civil Sciences Department, and was focused on the actual making of textiles. But in alignment with many other districts, we moved it to the Business Education Department and now it's focused on the Business of Fashion. Ms. Richards spoke to the Curriculum Committee about her enrollment in this course and about how really this is cutting edge in terms of what's happening out there in the state, in the nation, in the world and fashion trends and the business marketing aspect of that. The fifth curriculum guide this evening is a new curriculum, a new course at the high school with strong enrollment in the Business Education Department. It's called Investing in the Stock Market. It is a secondary level finance course. So students who have some introductory courses in finance and accounting can move on to investing in the stock market. Ms. Richards explained this curriculum to the committee, as well as the Child Development Curriculum. Here's an excellent example. Child Development used to be a full-year course and the high school reported having difficulty getting sufficient students to take it, to take it because it was a full year and difficult for them to fit in their schedules. Ms. Richards, from some experiences she had elsewhere, has retooled it as a one semester course. And we really now have really strong enrollment in the course, which is nice to see. The seventh curriculum guide comes from our Technology Education Department. Mr. Yakarino spoke about automotive systems. Again, we used to have an automotive two course, which was full year. Same issue because students had to lock into the same period of the full year. Now we have two half-year advanced automotive classes. This automotive systems is one of them. And Mr. Yakarino spoke about the Connecticut standards here. Now, and obviously, this takes advantage of the great resources Trumbull High School has as far as actual labs and vehicles, et cetera, where students can practice what they're learning in the comprehensive high school that we have. And finally, Competitive Recreational Dance is in our Wellness Department. Mr. DeScala and Mr. Moore spoke to us. This is an upper class elective in the physical education part of our Wellness Department. And students take this, if they're interested in it, above and beyond their core physical education health requirements. And in fact, I just have to say, bringing these eight to a close, I think what you see here is the richness of a comprehensive high school. And we are allowing student choice into the electives that interest them. And with 2,200 students and really appealing electives, we're able to sustain strong enrollment in all of these. So again, tribute to particular curriculum members, for committee members, but also to the whole board, I would support your endorsing all of these.
Okay, I would like someone to make a motion for all of these, and then if you have a question, we can ask Dr. Bud. Can someone make the motion?
Hi, this is, this is Scott. I would make the motion that we approve the curriculum guides as presented by Dr. Bud for Visual Art and Design, Mixed Media, Web.
Mixed Media, Web Design, The Business of Fashion, Investing in the Stock Market, Child Development, Automotive Systems and Competitive Recreational Games.
I'll second that.
Okay, does anyone have a question on any of these, Dr. Bud? Since Mr. Ward and Mrs. Petiti and I have seen these and we did have extensive conversations with the teachers who prepared them and they did an excellent job, so we'll leave it only for anyone else that might have a question. No, okay.
Well, yeah, I would just, I, I would just say it's so, it's, I think I said this at the last meeting or the meeting before about the, the effort that goes into creating these guides and how appreciative we are of uh, the staff that work on them. And uh, and I, I'm just so excited to see the diversity of offerings as you, uh, as you noted, Dr. Bud, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan, all the uh, curriculum guides were wonderful, but I really loved how stations approach was used in the child development. Those stations were really great. I enjoyed going through them. So all the curriculums were good, but that use of stations, you know, brought you right back to elementary school and the use of stations.
Anyone else?
Just a comment, Jim, you realize that it's kind of work. It's to mention that, we don't, as many of these reviews to teach, but they work so hard. And a lot of these curriculum guides that come out of secondary or high school, come out of high school, are from the, most of them are from teachers. Through their own teaching and over the years, is that we could do this a bit different? Instead of offering one year, let's do it a half year. And all the classes, we ask for the enrollment of the number of students that has got a full load of these classes. It's a wonderful way to teach them. That is true. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. It's uh, it's really exciting to see them all, when they come in, how they explain it. And I have to say, I really enjoy looking at the curriculum. Sometimes I ask for some student work and I did read a couple of them from Mr. Roberts' class, the Law Reviews. They were excellent, the kids, what the kids prepared. So it, it's just really exciting to see what they can think of. And I'm so happy that the curriculum comes from the staff. When it comes from them, they have a passion for it. So they make sure that they're preparing a curriculum guide that's really in their, that they love and they want to impart that knowledge to the students. I think it's great. Great job, Dr. Bud, thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to take the vote. Okay, Mrs. Petiti? Mr. Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, Madam.
Okay, Mrs. Norso?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Kim?
Yes, in favor.
Taylor?
In favor.
And Mrs. Tiffanelli in favor, thank you so much. Okay, I don't think there's an other on the list if there's anything else. And if not, I'm going to look to Mr. All right, Mr. Ward made a motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, have a good evening, good night, take care, thank you.